Ms. Hunt, would you take the roll?
Mr. Carter.
President.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougal.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Thank you.
Would you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I'll move now to item three under announcements and committee reports, and item three A is our COVID-19 update. As of this week, the state of Washington reports 644,254 cases, 8,659 fatalities throughout the pandemic. Seventy point seven percent of all Washingtonians from ages 12 and up are fully vaccinated. In Skagit County, as of today, we've had a total of 11,259 COVID tests. We've had 111 fatalities and 634 people hospitalized. Our COVID-19 case rates are increasing once again. As of last week, Skagit had a current case rate of 626 per 100,000 over the last 14 days, and a hospitalization rate of 11.5 patients per 100,000 over the previous seven days. Between September 5th and October 23rd, approximately 25% of our cases have been school-aged children. Vaccines in Skagit County. We've had 184,390 vaccine doses have been administered in Skagit County to date, with 68.7% of those ages 12 and up fully vaccinated. Booster doses are available by appointment only at the Skagit Fairgrounds. And according to the FDA and the CDC, mixing and matching your booster is safe and effective. Your booster shot does not have to be in this, be at the same COVID-19, be the same COVID-19 vaccine type as your primary vaccine. Free antigen testing at the Skagit Fairgrounds is limited to those who are currently symptomatic or have had a recent exposure. As always, the best way to be safe is by getting vaccinated, following the statewide mask mandate, and following the CDC recommendations. And let's see, in, in Skagit County, we have 3,817, this is the number of COVID cases. We had 3,817 people that were unvaccinated that got COVID. And we had 757 or eight, or 15.7% that were fully vaccinated or breakthrough cases. And unvaccinated 12 to 34-year-olds in Washington are five times more likely to get COVID-19 compared to fully vaccinated, and 16 times more likely to be hospitalized. Unvaccinated 35 to 64-year-olds are five times more likely to get COVID and 18 times more likely to be hospitalized. Unvaccinated 65 years and older are four times more likely to COVID-19, nine times more likely to be hospitalized, and nine times more likely to die of COVID. So there's recommendation, if you do get vaccinated, your chances of being hospitalized are greatly reduced. And that concludes my COVID-19 report today. Are there any questions?
Mayor Gear.
Yes, Mr. Young.
No, I just wanted to comment and thank you for the details brought forward. I think that it illuminates what we're dealing with, the fact that COVID cases are increasing and that even among the unvaccinated as well as vaccinated. But, you know, the detail that 25% of school-aged children also are catching COVID, I think is the horror of COVID. But I'm hoping that we can turn this trend around the other way. So thank you very much for those additional details.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Young. All right, this time I'll go on to item 3B, our Finance Committee report.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Walters.
Finance Committee met last Wednesday. We talked about a couple of things. Number one, we have an outstanding loan with the Anacortes Housing Authority for the work that we sort of jointly did on the Wilson Hotel a number of years ago. There's $170,000 remaining on the principal there. The, the process of repayment, because this is a CDVG loan, so it's federal funds, is complicated by the fact that anytime a payment is more than $25,000, we have to treat it as program income, which creates a lot of administrative burden. It's essentially treated the same way as CDVG money is when it originally comes into the city. So we have to amend our CDVG plan, we have to find a project, we have to fit it in, and then we have to execute it and spend it immediately. So staff are having difficulty with that, but also we're trying to find ways to help the housing authority, mainly because affordable housing is such a big issue here in Anacortes. And so staff have suggested that we could forgive that loan to the housing authority. And that would have really no impact on our CDVG program as it is today, except reducing some of our administrative costs, because we frequently provide that money to the housing authority anyway. And this way, it wouldn't have to go through the CDVG plan and the CDVG public hearing and all of those processes. So staff are going to be bringing that forward to us sometime in the near future. We also talked about the need to renumber our fiduciary funds. We have a number of these funds, most of which are established by city code. And the auditors have determined that they need to be renumbered to comply with New Gatsby 84 circular. And so their current numbering system calls them out as, as separate funds. They really shouldn't be called out that way. They should be contained within some other fund. So for instance, there's a, a tree preservation fund that doesn't need to be a top-level item in, in the bars manual in our budget. So it will move to, to be a restricted cash line elsewhere in the budget. It'll still be a fund for the purposes of municipal code. It won't be a fund like the other funds, like the general fund or our, or our other top-level funds. So it'll be some simplification of our accounting system. But mostly, it'll be consistent with what the general accounting standards require. And that'll happen retroactively to the beginning of the year. And there was some discussion about how that might be communicated to council and how council might achieve it, and might happen through a budget amendment. But really, it's just some renumbering in the financial system, so it could happen even absent one of those. And that's all I got.
Thank you. We'll move on down to item 3C is our Public Works Committee report.
Mayor Gear.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. The Public Works Committee met at 5:00 PM today. Mr. Young, Mr. Buckenmeyer, and I attended remotely. We talked about the water system plan update that needs to take place every 10 years. That's moving forward, as is the cleanup of the former water treatment plants. And then we talked mainly about our Outfall project. And that is still in progress with agreements that are being worked on between the city of Anacortes and the port of Anacortes. And those seem to be taking a little bit longer than expected, but they are moving forward. And we will hear more about that soon. And there will be more detailed information for the public as those details become available. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Moulton. I might also add that we also had a fiber committee. So would anyone like to update us on the fiber committee? This, Mr. Miller? No? Anyone else?
That's right. Mayor Gear.
Mr. McDougal.
Actually, bear with me for a sec. I need to pull up the notes.
Yeah, I just realized it wasn't listed.
The main things we discussed, working from memory here, is the Washington State Broadband Office grant funding. They've got, I forget the top-line number, but it was something like $230 million in grant funding, and they've received applications for somewhere in the range of $450 million. So that actually was, that's promising that, you know, it's not like some gigantic number that's like five times the amount of what's available. And they're hoping to make award announcements, I believe, by the end of the year. If I'm remembering correctly, there was like a step kind of end of November and then award end of year. So fingers are crossed there. The department themselves put in basically a grant, a grant filing that would cover kind of like all, kind of retroactively, all of the West End. And then the, oh, the, the Gwimus Run, sort of that, that middle section in between the West End and, and Old Town. And I forget what the total was, but, but it was basically a combination of projects that they put in and filed for. Some other items on the notes. So the RBC work in the West End is, is continuing. You know, we're about 44% complete in trenching and vault placement. So as you got, as you all know, we're passing about 2,700 resident or, you know, business or, I'm sorry, addresses in the West End. And so nearly 50% done with that, that first pass. We've got across the city, a total of 686 orders or across the, the West End. So that's very nearly 30% signups. And we haven't started connecting customers yet, so that's really good. Some other items, we discussed a number of ad hoc projects that are still kind of in flight. Dakota Creek Industries, the, the Swenomish is looking, they're looking to maybe connect up the, the golf course. Another project with Samish Indian Nation, connecting Fidalga Bay Resorts. A number of these projects are all sort of additional, like business lines, so higher, higher revenue lines for, for the, the service itself. We hired a new network technician, Jason Lee, about a week and a half ago. And then Kimberly Henry hired as business coordinator. Actually, maybe, maybe just started today. So welcome both Jason and Kimberly to the team. And some main stuff I've got. So Mr. Miller, Mr. Walters, if you have anything else.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Walter, I mean, Mr. Miller.
Yeah, just on the, the West End numbers, I know people are chomping at the bit out there to, to get it hooked up. And I think it's important to note that they did about 100 partial installs. So that'll help when they go back to quickly be able to, to hook those folks up. And, and again, the numbers are looking good to, to wrap things up in the West End. And unless Mr. Walters had anything else, Mayor, I have an LTAC report also.
All right, Mr. Walters, anything else? Okay, Mr. Miller, LTAC, please.
Yeah, sorry, it's not on the reporting, but LTAC actually wrapped up a little earlier than normal. We had four, four meetings over the last four weeks. And I think it'll, should come before council in the next couple of weeks. Either Don or Joanne will present. And I think the same theme as last year, the LTAC Committee was looking to lean pretty far forward in helping the business community and the festivals and all the great things that LTAC funds to get, to get going again next year. So it's a, it's a pretty big number. But the good news is the revenues, the, some of the hoteliers have seen. The August numbers just came in, and they were much better than even previous COVID years. And that doesn't include one of our new hotels in town. So I, I think we're going to have some good numbers, and we'll see it, like I said before, council, within the next couple of weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Anything else? All right, before we go to item four, public comment, I want to add that item seven, Executive Session, will not happen. It's canceled this evening. We have nothing to discuss in Executive Session. All right, so now we'll move to item four, public comment. If there's anyone in the public that would like to make a comment, please raise your hand this time. All right, I don't see anyone with their hands up. So we'll move on to our consent agenda, items 5A through D.
Mayor Gear.
Here.
Mr. Young.
No, well, I was just going to move if there were not any objections or anything that needed to be pulled that we approved the consent agenda.
Oh, well, let, let me make it, Mr. Walters, can I make one comment? I was supposed to do this before we started. Item 5C has been removed, and we will return it to the council next week. And that's the one for the Anacortes Community Forestlands, and we'll bring it back with a resolution. Mr. Walters.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Mr. Walters for items 5A and B and D. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll move on now to other business under number six. And 6A is a planning commission appointment. I have made an appointment, but I need the confirmation of the council. So I, I appreciate the contribution of this volunteer and their willingness to serve our community. And the person I'm bringing for, before you tonight for confirmation from the council, his name is Jack Curtis. He is an incredible volunteer in our community. He has a family here. And he's excited about making a contribution to our community. He would, his term would be effective December 23rd until December 2023, excuse me, replacing Mike Courtright. Are there any questions about Mr. Curtis from the council? All right.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Miller.
I move that Jack Curtis be appointed to the Planning Commission.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Miller, a second by Ms. Moulton. Ms. Hunt, would you take the vote?
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Walters.
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yes.
Ms. Moulton.
Yes.
Mr. McDougal.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So at this time, we're going to move to item 6B. This is open for public comment. This is a review of the 2022 but proposed budget. And this is for all departments in the city other than the Public Works Department. Mr. Hoagland.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council and members of the audience. If I can share my screen. We'll start with this same summary chart that we looked at last week. I just wanted to go through this again real, real briefly. The columns layout the adopted budgets that we've had the last several years, and the rows lay out the different funds. So this top level of depart, these are departments within the general fund. And this is the total of those general fund departments. So there's a, a significant increase in the general fund for the 2022 draft. We'll talk in more detail about this in, in a little bit. But I did want to point out that what's making up the majority of the increase in the general fund is an increase in fiber. And this is due to the planned continued capital expansion of the fiber backbone, and also a significant increase in fire. And this is from budgeting for a ladder truck in 2022. And again, we'll talk about that in, in more detail in a little bit. The other thing that is within the 2022 draft that we don't have in the 2021 budget is ER and R replacement funds. And we, I think we, we've talked about that a couple of times now. But when we were establishing the 2021 budget, we were still in the midst of the COVID pandemic. A lot of unknowns in the economy and in the future. So we, we removed the ER and R replacement funds as a cash flow saving measure. And those ER and R replacement funds are being reintroduced at a 50% level, and I marked that up here. So that's another thing that's adding to, to the increase. When we get to fiber, we can talk at more detailed, at a more detailed level. But I did want to point out that on the revenue side of the budget, the fiber department is projecting to have sufficient revenues in 2022 to pay for operating costs of the department. And the operating costs, as you may remember, are pretty significant at this point because of the effort to hook up as many customers as possible. We have a large crew right now. So 2022 is projecting to cover those fiber revenues, to cover 2022 fiber operating costs. And then with that continued level of expansion into 2023, all of those additional revenues will just go to alleviate cash flow impacts for the rest of the general fund. So it's a, it's, I guess, kind of a good news story. But at any rate, I wanted to kind of, kind of paint that with a broad brush before we got started at the detailed level of the budget. So if there are no other questions about this summary level, we can jump into the detailed review. So we'll start, we'll start with the Administrative Services Department. And the, the first department is the Court Department, which is Department 130. So it's 001, 130 is the Court Department within the general fund. So as we discussed last week, the bars make up. I tried to put notes where it made sense, where you could identify sections within the department by the bar structure. So this 512 dot 50 identifies court services. So pretty consistent with prior years, salary wages, benefits, $2,100 for operating supplies, interfund services. I meant to mention this as well. So in addition to ER and R increases, we are re, we are, we're seeing increases in all of our interfund services, including departments that don't have vehicles specifically because of the, the IT department charges. So those same replacement charges are at 50% this year, just like ER and R, in addition to any of the other increases within the fund. So interfund services at 30,000, professional services at 153,000. You can see a detailed breakout here, the largest sections of that 153,000 being probation at 45,000, and judicial services at 80,000. Communication at 6,000. Travel and training at 3,000. And then that drops us down to the next section, 515 dot 91 is indigent services or our public defender's office. Staff costs of salaries and weight, salaries, wages, and benefits of about 274,500 for operating supplies. 9,09213 for interfund, 25,000 for professional services. This is primarily for conflict attorneys, communication of 750, 2,700 for travel and training, which covers dues as well, professional dues. So that's it for court, pretty consistent with prior years. There's no questions about that. We can move on to the DIS Department, which is Department 001220. And that starts on line 107. So consistent to the prior year, salary and wages at 500, almost 519,000, benefits at 216,000, supplies at 8,000, and small tools and minor equipment at 428,000. So keeping in mind that we went a couple of years with very little in replacement hardware. So we're going to be making some of that up next year in 2022. And a lot of this, 428,000, I believe, 372,000 or 382,000 of this 428 will come out of existing replacement charges. Drop down to interfund services, 6,800. Professional services at 550,000. And there's a very detailed, comprehensive list here. You'll see the, the largest elements of that is 85,000 for the Microsoft Office 365 license renewal and the Eden Software license renewal of 85,000. Brings us down to the, the end of the department, communication at 4,200, travel, training at 10,500, and a small repairs line of 4,000. So that's it for the IT department. There's no, no questions there. We can move on to the HR Department, which is 001 dot 230, and that starts at line 203. So line, actually starting on line 204, office and operating supplies. At 6,500, professional services at 3,000. Sorry, I'll back up to line 203. That, this may cause some confusion. Seeing a negative 346,000 here and negative 144,000 here, and then nothing but a different 2022. So this line, it's, it's there to process our, our city insurance payments. So the, the payments that the city makes to WCIA for employee health insurance, that those payments are collected from the different departments that the employees work in. So those payments then go to the HR Department, and HR then makes that payment to WCIA. And this, these negative numbers and this, this small positive number, that's a product of the internal accounting and how the payment just flows in and out of the, that bar's number. So sometimes there's a, a remnant left in there that carries over into the next period. So again, 6,500 for supplies, 3,000 for professional services. Down into the personnel costs. And you'll notice a variety, not a variety, several different bars numbers that contain salary and wages and benefits information within HR. And HR has, they have their budget broken out into several areas that identify what those parts of the budget are, are used for. So I, I made a note over here, the dot 10 again, relating to this portion of the bar's number. But if you look in column B, you can also see these areas identified. So personnel services. Interfund at 12,000, this professional services line at 80,000. This where we, we contain the citywide, a lot of the citywide training budget. 1,500 for communication, 4,500 for travel and training. So that's the, the segment within the personal services. The next line down is police labor relations. Salaries and benefits, 15,000 for professional services. So this is budget for outside, outside contract attorneys if needed for, for those labor relations activities. Same thing for fire, fire labor relations. Salaries, benefits, 15,000 for professional services. Other labor relations, salaries, benefits, 5,000 for professional services. 284 for insurance. Next line down, the police civil service section of the budget. Salaries, benefits, 14,000 for professional services, 500 for training. Fire civil service is the next section. 6,586 for employee costs, 14,000 professional services, 500 for, for training. And that's, that's entirety of the HR. And that's, that's entirety of the HR department. If there's any questions there, be happy to address those or we can, or we can move on. The next department is the fire fiber department. And that's 001260. So if you drop down to line 322, that's the first line of the fiber budget. Salaries and benefits totally in 1.1 million. Office and operating supplies, 11,000 made up of a variety of items delineated in the details. Hardware, office supplies and articles of clothing for the staff, for the field staff boots. $10,000 for tools and equipment. And this brings us down to interfund services, 89,000. Professional services of 199,000. With a variety of items detailed out of largest of which 81,000, almost 82,000 for knowing at Knox services. Brings us down to communication at 5,800 primarily for cell phones, 14,000 for training. 13,000 for taxes. Utilities, $2,100 for solid waste charges, 80,000 we've budgeted for interest costs. This would be assuming the entire 4.5 million of the line of credit was expended. 9.3 million in total between the IDA grant area budgeted at 5.4 million and the Gwame's view area budgeted at 3.8 million. And this is consistent with the capital facilities plan as well. On the revenue side of the budget here, we do have 9.3 million identified with loan proceeds or bond proceeds to fund that capital expansion. Additional equipment or additional capital in form of equipment, 362,000. The largest of which are O N Ts and G point SFPs. So that is the entirety of the fiber department. If council has questions on that, we would be happy to try and address those. Or, and this is actually the last department of administrative services department. So if you have questions on any of the administrative services, now would be the time. Otherwise, we can move on to legal. Legal department is department 250 within the general fund, 001.250. So the first that budget starts on line 309. We have 10,000 budgeted in professional services. That's primarily to support code publishing. Staff costs of almost 405,000, 6,000 in operating supplies, 38,000 in interfund services. 110,000 in professional services and the majority of this is for the prosecuting attorney contract. $2,400 for communication and 6,000 for travel and training. There's questions for the legal department? Otherwise, we will can move on to public safety. The police department is the next department that we'll look at. We scroll down to 001.310. And that starts at line 424. So the first line here is personal benefits, this 87,800, this is the benefits the city pays for our left one retirees. The next section, the administration section of the budget. Salaries and benefits of 617,000. At $4,500 in office supplies. Interfund services of 269,000. So again, the police department with a number of vehicles in their fleet. I want to say they went two years without replacing cars. So they have a number of vehicles that will, will be coming up for replacement next year. Professional services at 65,000 and that's broken down between two lines here, the majority of which is to support the social worker program. 109, sorry, 119,000 in communication, the majority of which is Spillman user fees. Insurance of 19,000. This next section, that 20 support services. A little bit of overtime of 2100, total employee cost of 364,985. 9,000 for communication. Dot 30 is crime prevention, the staff costs of almost 95,000. Just under 4,000 for office and operating supplies. $945 for tools. $8,200 for professional services and the majority of this is for domestic violence and sexual assault services and island hospital. 50,000 in travel and training. And this brings us down to dot 50, which is facilities. 2,800 for office and operating supplies. 23,500 for professional services, which is primarily cleaning supplies, or I'm sorry, cleaning services. 4,700 for insurance, 42,000 for utilities. We have 19,000 budgeted for repairs and maintenance. The next section down about 70 is patrol and investigations. Total staff cost here of 3.275 million with 123,000 of that overtime. I did. Sorry, I was looking for my notes. I made a note earlier of our overtime costs. I know they look, when you're looking at those departmental overtime numbers in a variety of different bars numbers and looking at the, the history is, you know, especially looking at earlier this current year and last year, things being a little bit skewed because, because of COVID. But in 2019, actual overtime costs were 175,000, 2020 was 113,000. The 2021 budget is 122,000 and we're budgeting 123 next year. So even though our, our axles were a little lower in 2020 and are trending low again in 2021, this 123 seems to be a more realistic estimate of overtime. Uniform purchases of 30,000. Chief was expecting to have to outfit three new officers. I'm sorry, before we get too far off this, I did want to point out the, the initial draft budget that we put together. Chief Floyd had requested an additional police officer and additional patrol officer. Ultimately, that position was cut out of this final draft, but that is something that the police department is looking at and will likely bring back to the table again in the future. Office and operating supplies of 15,000. Small tools of 60,000. Interfund services of nearly 300,000. Professional services of 10,000. Again, we're, we're low this year, but I met with chief earlier. He's expecting that this is going to be a more accurate reflection of activity in 2022. Schedule 911 fees, their estimate that they provided us is 257,000. And we have 6,100 budgeted for repairs and maintenance. This brings us down to the dot 523, which is detention. So this 928,000, this is the public safety sales tax that passes through the city. We collect that 310's public safety sales tax and then forward that on to the county for the jail. So the, that's our portion of supporting the county jail, 45,997. This is for medical costs for our required medical costs for people that are in, in jail. And this is based on the pre-pandemic estimates. So it's been low the last couple of years because of the, the COVID restrictions, but this is based that we're expecting that to come back up to a more normalized level. And the last section of the, last section of the police budget of 554.30 is animal control. About 110,000 in staff costs. About almost 1,200 in supplies, 4,800 in interfund services and 10,000 in professional services, which is primarily when we need to process animals, the fees associated with that. So that's it for the police department. We know, pardon me, I know we covered a lot of ground there. If anybody has questions on police, otherwise we can move on to the fire department. Our department is 001.320. Starts on line 488. Similar to the police department, our left one retiree benefits are paid through the department. Those are budgeted at 45,909. The admin section. 173,554. In staff costs. Office and operating supplies. 117. Interfund at 40,265. 63,000 for professional services. Sorry, I'm skipping over these pretty, pretty quickly. I can back up a little bit. The, the chief put in a lot of good detail in the budget here. So the office and operating supplies of 117,000. It's typical office supplies, pride and service, admin uniforms, office furniture and printing. 63,000 for professional services covers our fees to DNR. New hire exams, fitness memberships, equipment, copier maintenance. Cleaning of uniforms. And then 25,000 in communication covers cell phones, spillman costs and net motion. Insurance 7,500. And this brings us down to suppression, the dot 20 section. Staff costs of 574,000. Sorry, that includes volunteers, volunteer wages at 29,400. So the career costs 631,000 plus 87,000 and overtime 718,000 plus 29,400 in budgeted salary and wages for volunteers. 30,000 in tools, which would pay for gas testing equipment, LDH and low pressure. And that brings us down to dot 30 prevention. Salary and wages of 95,000, overtime of 12,000 and personal benefits of just under 34,000. And the training. Staff cost at 155,000. 72,000 for travel and training. And that brings us down to facilities. 5,000 for office and operating supplies. 28,800 for operating rentals and leases, and that's for the station three rent. Insurance 2,600. Utilities of 27,000. Reversion maintenance, 15,000. Included elevator, A doors, pest services, gutters, window washing. Office and operating supplies of 7,500. Is that the live, the live fire training facility? Interfund services of 266,000. This brings us down to disaster management. So supplies of 2,000, tools of 3,000, interfund at 22,000. Professional services at 104,000, which covers the EM fees, disaster planning and disaster consultation. 4,000 for travel and training. And then we talked about this earlier, the ladder truck is included in this budget at 1.5 million. This would be a new addition. So it's a new addition to the fleet in terms of replacement charges. We have an existing ladder truck that was given to the city by one of the refineries a number of years ago. That truck was never included in the fleet replacement charges. So, so the purchase of a replacement ladder truck is going to be made out of existing, out of the existing budget for the fire department. Once that purchase is made, then that truck will be added into fleet. And then those replacement charges for that new truck would be recorded every year for the future. So in the, in the future, and that truck needs to be replaced, that replacement money will be there.
Mr. Walters.
As, as it should. I noted that Mount Vernon is also buying a ladder truck. They seem to be expecting to spend maybe a hundred thousand dollars less. Just wondering if there's a two for one deal.
Yeah, fair question. I did speak with Chief Harris earlier today and Assistant Chief Kennedy. We talked about this at length and they've done a lot of research on the, the truck. So I'm glad you mentioned this. I wanted to hold up for a minute and talk a little bit more about this truck. So Chief Kennedy did identify that with the, the vehicle that they were looking at. There was, there was the potential for some cost savings on this. And one of them, one of the cost saving measures is for purchasing the, if you pay for the, the truck upfront. So if you just pay, if you have the cash and you pay for the entire thing upfront. I, I believe he said that was about 100,000 in cost savings to do it that way, which is, you know, that's, that's real money. The other thing that was important about this is they're expecting a significant increase in the price of these vehicles. This is Pierce, the manufacturer is expecting something in the neighborhood of a 10% increase in their vehicles as of January 1st. So one of the things I was hoping to get from council tonight, and if not tonight, then in the very near future is a head nod, if you will, if not a full blown motion to to purchase a ladder truck is if we can, if we can get in the, if we can put our order in before the end of the year, we will be given the 2021 prices, which if we wait till after the first of the year, 10% increase on 1.5 million is a considerable amount of money. So so those two items, I don't know how that stacks up against the not burning price. Not sure, you know, the manufacturer that they were dealing with or, or any of those details. Not sure, you know, the manufacturer that they were dealing with or any of those details, but. But there could be some savings over what we're looking at here. And a significant portion of that would be just to be able to get into their firing order before the end of the year.
Mayor Gare.
Mr. Walters.
Yeah, certainly, I would, I would like to know that our fire chiefs talking to their fire chief and understanding what it is they're looking at. Whether they're looking at anything different than what we can achieve, but what was our financing mechanism on this? Aren't we going after some kind of financing state revolving fund?
Right, I believe, yeah, it's called the local program and it's through the, it's through the state treasurer's office. So that, that loan program right now is offering ten year fixed rate financing at one point two five percent. So a pretty competitive rate. So the, the thinking that we were kind of bouncing around this morning, if we could. It would be nice to be able to take advantage of that cash discount or full payment discount. And we could potentially do that by tapping into general fund reserves. And then, once we obtain that local. Local program loan, pay ourselves back essentially, so.
Yeah, so long as we've done the math and we have certainty about obtaining the loan and the timing all works out. And it doesn't interfere with qualifying for the loan or anything like that, I'm supportive.
Mayor Gare.
Mr. Young.
No, I just wanted to echo what Mr. Walters was saying and say, I'm very supportive as well. Just, you know, listening to the numbers, if we wait until the first of the year, that may. To order or signal we're gonna order, that will be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you know, increase. And if we look at, if we could pay cash for it, if that were possible, that's an additional hundred thousand. So roughly, we're weighing now a savings of possibly two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's as Mr. Walter says, real money, or no, Steve says, real money.
That's right.
I didn't mean to attribute that to someone else, but two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is a lot of money. And if what you need from us is just a head nod to move forward and trying to figure this out, I'm supportive.
Yeah, Mayor Gare.
Ms. Cleo McGraw.
Yeah, you know, just as a background, the Public Safety Committee has been talking about the ladder truck for a number of years, as has the fire chief. So to me, it seems like waiting is not necessary. And we're seeing more and more three story buildings and four story buildings being built. So we need to make sure that we can provide those services on a dependable basis. So I'm fine with a head nod and let's keep moving forward with it.
Mayor Gare.
Mr. Miller.
Yeah, and again, it sounds like a good idea, but in the overall, in the grand scheme of things, if we're talking about a general fund reserve loan. We need to talk about that in the context of the overall budget. Because we still don't have, you know, we're looking at the other part of the general fund of eleven million dollars for fiber. And we still don't have a detailed plan of how we're paying for that, whether we're gonna bounce down into our reserve until we get the EDA grant. So, you know, that, I think the head, we're not up against a timeline yet, so I appreciate. Steve, you telling us that you'd like to have a head nod to say, okay, let's go ahead, go forward with the ladder truck. But I think we need a little more fidelity on the rest of the general fund reserve plan in the context of the overall budget.
Mayor Gare.
Mr. Walters.
Yeah, if we need to provide that in more detail to make council members comfortable with it, I think that that makes sense, but. I think we've got. Reserves sufficient to pay for the ladder truck, at least temporarily, and the EDA grant. When it comes through, we'll start incurring expenditures after it comes through. And we've got the line of credit for the rest of fiber, so I expect that we're in good shape, but it wouldn't hurt to demonstrate all that on a single sheet of paper. Mayor Gare.
Mr. Miller.
Yeah, and I concur with, with, with all of that. Again, and I, and, but being on the fiber committee and on the public safety committee. I, you know, the ED grant, EDA grant is continuing to roll forward and I'm confident it's gonna come in. But I want to be a little more confident. And from the public safety committee side, it's been a really long time since the fire department has. Given the pitch for the ladder truck, yes, I know it's old, I, yes, I know we need a new one. But to do the cost, the cost benefit analysis, it's been a while since we've seen that. So I think that would be valuable for the council overall to hear that one more time.
Yeah, I think, I think that's fair, I think all that makes sense, so perhaps what. If. Counsel agrees, perhaps myself and the chief can come back in a couple of weeks. To counsel with a little more information and, and, you know, maybe even something like a. I don't know, a resolution or something that could, you know, that could actually put a, you know, a hard point on this item.
Mayor Gare.
Mr. Miller.
Yeah, sorry, just one more point on that, and also I think it's really important that when you bring that number back. Because the council voted to support the updated fire impact fees. And we would, and the main reason for that was for a ladder truck. And, and so that needs to be part of that conversation, how much money's in there? What's the long term, you know, estimated, you know, revenue being generated by that? That's a really important part of that conversation.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, and then Steve, when you do come back, or you can talk about what we do have in our general fund reserves. Because we're pretty healthy right now, as I recall. All right, can we move forward then?
Okay. Yeah, okay, so that is. Okay, so that's the end of the fire department in the general fund. The fire department is made up of two, two different departments, fire and EMS. EMS is contained in its own fund, which is fund number one ten. So it'll drop down to fund one ten. And that starts at line. Nine thirty one. So. Salaries and wages. Admin section of a hundred and seventy three thousand. Plies of a hundred and thirty five thousand, consistent with the prior year for a new soul monitor medications and other expendable medical equipment. Two hundred and fifteen thousand for interfund services. It's a big jump, but again, those. The MS charges for ambulances is, is what is stacking up there. Professional services at a hundred one thousand. Or ISO systems design, Knox Cloud, so systems design is. The entity that does our ambulance billing for us, we have, one of our accountants does the pre billing and the actual billing to the insurance and. Others goes through systems design, communication of thirty three thousand. Putting spillman radio infrastructure and cell phones. Under that seventy, which is ambulance services. Two point two million in salary and wages, two hundred and eleven thousand in overtime, fifty four thousand for volunteers and eight hundred and forty thousand in benefits. So I did the same, the same review of overtime for EMS that I thought I would share. In. Twenty nineteen. Overtime actuals was two hundred and twenty eight thousand for this combined fire EMS. On twenty twenty, it was two hundred and eight thousand. And budget request is two hundred and eleven thousand for twenty twenty two. Two thousand travel and training. And just down to the miscellaneous item, which is billing write offs. It's. The ambulance billing that we, that we process, those generally aren't paid at one hundred percent. There's some level that are write offs and a large portion of that is. From Medicare and Medicaid statute prevents us from pursuing those unpaid portions of Medicare and Medicaid. And then the GMT program has its own set of write offs, so that's a GMT is a separate revenue stream. That is supposed to, it was established recognizing that the Medicare payments were. Were low, quite low, and the intent was to make, make up some of that difference, but then it came with its own write offs as well. And that's, that's it for EMS, so happy to answer any questions about EMS or any thoughts that came up regarding fire. While we were talking about that, any questions before we move on? Okay, so the next section is the museum and we'll jump back up to the general fund. That's zero zero one four fifty. And that starts on line five forty four. So looking at salaries and benefits at three hundred and eighty seven thousand. Interfund services of thirty two thousand eight hundred and sixty eight. And traveling training at forty three hundred. Taxes at four hundred. Office and operating supplies of eighty eight hundred. Broken out in this detail here, curatorial supplies, exhibits, education, office supplies, museum, software and collection purposes, purchases. Professional services at eleven thousand. A lot of that is for mural conservation. Thirty four hundred in communication. And that drops down the next section to facilities, which is ninety eight hundred dollars. And that would be office and operating supplies for all of the. For all three of the facilities, seven hundred and fifty dollars. In rentals and leases. Twelve hundred dollars in insurance. Fifteen thousand for utilities and then thirty seven thousand five hundred and seventy five in repairs and maintenance. Identified at both the Preston and Carnegie building. And that's the total of the museum budget. If there are no questions there, we can move on, the next section is parks and recreation. Will drop down to fund one oh one. And that starts at. Line six fifty eight. So salaries and wages at a hundred and fifty three thousand. Student rec wages at twenty eight thousand, a little bit of overtime, thirty seven hundred. And seventy nine thousand five hundred and five for personnel benefits. Next section, office and operating supplies at eighty six thousand. And this is rec program and departmental operating supplies. Professional services of forty nine thousand. Referees, instructors, we also pay our credit card fees out of that. Communication sixty six hundred dollars. Travel and training at fifteen hundred and fifty dollars. We drop down to the next section, five seventy three dot ten is for the arts commission, we have three thousand dollars budgeted. For the arts commission. Next section and fund one oh one, five seventy five dot fifty, that's the depot. At twenty thousand. Budgeted for professional services. That communication line is gone now, it's, the depot is now on C fiber. Thousand for taxes, sixteen thousand for utilities and twenty one hundred for repairs. The next section down is the senior center. Salary and benefits at two hundred and thirty seven, two fifty nine. And five thousand budgeted for office and operating supplies, fifty two thousand five ninety three for interfund services. And fifty five thousand for professional services, the majority of that is meals on wheels and then thirteen thousand for the aging mastery program. Communication of five hundred, fifteen hundred for travel and training. Twenty two thousand for utilities at senior center. Drop down to the next section, five seventy six point eighty, it's general parts. Six hundred and two thousand for. Salary and wages, forty one hundred for overtime, two hundred and fifty four thousand for benefits. Office and operating supplies at sixty three thousand five hundred, this is all general park supplies, lawn building and equipment maintenance. Thirteen hundred and fifty for tools. Her fund is a hundred and ninety eight thousand seven hundred and eleven. Professional services at thirty eight thousand, the majority which is for fireworks and also eight thousand for springtime contracting. Five thousand dollars for communication. Thirty eight hundred for travel and training, this line is primarily for staff certifications. Eighteen hundred and twenty for taxes. Insurance of forty seven hundred seventy one. And sixty two thousand for utilities. Repairs of a thousand. This next section. The community forest science section within fund one oh one. That costs seven hundred and forty six thousand. Sixteen hundred for. Office and operating supplies, five hundred for tools. Interfund services at twelve thousand two hundred and fifty eight and communication at four thousand. With this last section of fund one oh one, so any questions about the fund one oh one parks and rec fund? We can move on to the cemetery. Staff costs in the cemetery of two hundred and thirty thousand eight hundred and twenty salaries and benefits. Supplies at twenty five hundred. This next line, dot thirty four supplies purchased for inventory or resale, and this is for a concrete liner, seventeen hundred and fifty dollars. Tools of four hundred dollars, interfund at thirty seven hundred. And uniform cleaning of a hundred dollars. Taxes at thirteen hundred and fifty and a thousand dollars for paying for portable restroom. Insurance of three hundred and seven and eight thousand for utilities. And that is it for the cemetery fund. If there's any question on the cemetery, otherwise we can drop down to Washington Park. Washington Park is fund one oh seven. Drop down to line eight hundred and ninety four. So we have. Washington Park staff costs of a hundred and fifty five thousand four hundred and ninety nine. Twenty nine thousand dollars for office and operating supplies. And this is primarily for pay machine maintenance and other miscellaneous park supplies. Supplies purchased for inventory or resale, this is the firewood that we purchased and then resell to campers, seven thousand dollars. Irrelevant services of seven thousand four hundred and sixty eight. Professional services of fifteen thousand, which covers credit card fees and pest control. Taxes of fifteen hundred and twenty six, insurance of eight hundred and thirty nine and utilities at thirty thousand budgeted for. Budgeted for 2022. You can see it's consistent with what we're seeing year to date in 2021. That's it for Washington Park. If there's no questions on Washington Park budget. And drop down to the next park section, which is the parks capital construction fund, Fund 108. That starts at line number 915. Total capital projects identified in 2022 is 870,000. That's 50,000 for Washington Park campground improvements, 350,000 for the Tommy Thompson Trail Causeway. 125,000 for the Cap Santa project. 20,000 for an avenue improvements. And 325,000 for the Washington Park restroom and infrastructure upgrade. And this is consistent with the capital facilities plan as well. If there's no questions on Fund 108, we can drop down to the ACFL fund, which is Fund Number 113, and that starts at line number 968. So staff costs in the ACFL fund. At 42,107. Professional services at 13,000, which the majority of which is 7,000 for conservation easement, 3,000 for trail repair. And 3,000 for Forest Survey Collaboration Project. 1,069 for taxes. We have 250 identified here. This is kind of a marker that we've had in the past, but it's under the capital program you can see in 2019, we spent 27,750 out of that line. It's unlikely we would spend 250, but that marker is carryover from year to year. But that's it for the ACFL fund and that's the last part of parks generally. So any questions on Fund 113 or any of the other parks programs? If not, we can move on to the library. Which is Fund 103. So scroll back up and the library department starts at line 752. The dot 10, first part of first part of the budget administration. Staff cost of 136,000. Next section is library services, the staff cost of 1,128,000. 3,100 for office and operating supplies. 84,250 for supplies purchased for inventory. This is our book budget. Professional services of $30,000. 1,860 communication, which is primarily phones. 8,500 for staff training. This is a considerably from the current year's budget. I spoke with Jeff Ogle earlier today about that. There's a national conference that goes from city to city. Every year this next year, it's scheduled to be in Portland. So there are several of the staff that are planning on taking advantage of that local training. So 8,500 for next year. 6,000 for CPR training. Interfund services of 141,000. So this is something Jeff and I have talked about a couple of times now. And I know that we've talked to the mayor about it as well. So this, it's a pretty big increase to the library budget. This interfund services line, and this is this is all from the IT budget and what we are doing now. We are going to be taking a look at the way we're allocating these costs. It's never changed the way, the way we've allocated those since I've been here. But it is a big impact to the library. They have very, pretty much a static budget from year to year. It's almost entirely budgeted with property tax, but that is something I want to take a look at over the next year. Before our next budget cycle is the way we allocate those DIS costs to ensure that the way we're doing that is equitable and fair.
Mayor here.
Mister.
Yeah, I think we, we discussed this a little bit in library committee and I'm trying to remember now what, which IT service or increase in services driving that big jump? Like, did, did the library incorporate a bunch of new equipment or new software licenses?
Yeah, it's exactly. And it's a combination of that. And we've added an additional staff member to the IT department. You know, it's just the demands, the IT demands of the city have, you know, have really grown the last few years. The way we allocate those costs is based on nodes and a node is essentially a piece of equipment. And it's yeah, I think it's time to just take a hard look at that and make sure the way we're allocating those costs makes, makes the most sense. It, it's maybe hasn't been as big an issue in the past, but you know, when you see, you know, that you know, that, that budget line growing, you know, faster than what the library can accommodate it, I think it forces us to at least take a look at what we're doing to make sure it is fair and equitable.
Yeah, agreed. I think it'd be a good thing to cover perhaps, I mean, obviously in the next IT committee meeting or like combined, like IT and finance discussion.
Sure. Yeah, good idea.
Thank you.
Yeah, so 141,000 interfund services, 20,000 in professional services. This is for janitorial needs, the library. Insurance of 8,690. Utilities of 48,000 and then repairs and maintenance for the facility budgeted at 16,000. So that's, that's it for the library budget. Are there any questions about, about the library? We've I think we've moved through this pretty efficiently tonight. Thank you, council members. So that brings us kind of to the wrap up section, which are those, some of those other areas that I'll that I'll cover, including finance, but some other, some of our other areas as well. So I'm going to jump back up to the top of this file. Legislative section, and that starts at line 17. And 001.110. So this is the legislative council section. So in professional services, we do have 40,000 budgeted for continued A-Town publication. 3,000 budgeted for communication, which is primarily ordinance publications. 19,000 for salaries and wages, 15,000 for benefits. 2,000 for supplies. 18,000 for interfund services. We have 15,000 in professional services. This is for SCOG views. 1,200 for communication, which is primarily postage. And we have 1,000 budgeted for travel and training, and this is primarily for new council member training in the coming year. The next section is voter registration costs. This is what we pay the county for our share of voter registration costs. This varies from year to year. You can see 2020, it was almost 68,000. So far this year, it's been 26,000. It does tend to be a little cyclical. We're expecting it to be up a little bit next year. 40,000.
Mayor here.
Mister Young.
Um, just I guess a little bit of concern for one of the items. I'm just noticing it as Mr. Hogland goes through it, you know, for training. A thousand dollars. I, I think that's just a little low considering, even though we may not have used it in the past. But there may be some instances for additional training that may come up such as, you know, reviewing budgets or public works issues that we may want to take a look at. We've not done that as much. But I, I think before you've indicated that we could find the resources if it's something we think is appropriate, but my concern at $1,000 just seemed like it was a little bit low.
I, I think that's fair. When you, when you look back at what we've incurred the last couple of years, you know, we're nearly at that thousand dollar level without any of the new council member. So yeah, you, you make a good point, Mr. Young. That may be a bit on, on the low side. I'd be happy to change that or, you know, we could just keep our fingers on it as we move through the year. If we need to make adjustments, we can at that time.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. Just, you know, just wanted to bring up that concern such that we would be on the record about it. So in case we go back later on and make some adjustments. It would be that we've already raised the concern.
Right. Okay.
Moving down to the rest of the budget. We have 48,000 budgeted for our Channel 10 operations and 5,000 in office and operating supplies for Granicus. And that's the legislative budget. If there's no further questions, we can move down to the executive budget. Staff cost at 183,000. Supplies at 1,700. Interfund services at 18,000. Professional services at 1,500. Communication at 1,200, travel and training at 2,000. And this includes some of the dues that the mayor's office pays for the chamber sister cities. Things of that nature. If there's no questions about either legislative or executive, we can drop down to the finance budget. That's 001.210, starts at line 88. Staff costs budgeted at 652,000 next year. Supplies at 15,000 and the finance department does pick up some of the paper and envelope costs for the city hall, the larger city hall entity. Interfund services at 50,000. Professional services at 45,000 and that's primarily state audit fees. Communication at 15,000. Travel and training at 3,500 and taxes at 200. There's no questions about that. I'd like to drop down to Fund 109. It's our affordable housing fund. And this is really just a look at the revenue estimate for the affordable housing. So that's down at line 923. This is our 110th sales tax. We are budgeting 655,463. And this is a direct product of what we're estimating our sales tax at. And this is split between the housing authority and the family center. The next budget on the list is impact fees, Fund 112, which starts at line 961. I could have left this out because we don't actually have any impact fees budgeted for use in 2022. Any of those, at this point, at least any of those impact fees that we bring in will just be booked into cash reserves for future use. Fund 135. This is the lodging tax. Mr. Miller was talking about this earlier in the night. The, so we put a marker in here in the 2022 budget of 490,000 and this is just a marker. So we have a budget amount there. This, obviously, the expenditure budget is entirely based on the amount of contracts that council approves using those lodging tax numbers. If we then if, if those are finalized before year, year end, we can easily update those at that time. The last figure I wanted to talk about is Fund 611. So all the way back down to the very bottom of the budget. Which is line 1646. So we've got two items identified for expenditure in Fund 611. So this actually goes back to Mr. Walters Finance Committee Report. We talked about the trust funds that the city has. Out of the several trust funds that are on the city's books right now, this Fund 611 is the only one that actually qualifies as a trust under the state auditor's new new review standards. And this is for this fund to set up specifically to pay for benefits and related costs to our firefighters who served before the left system was in place. So the pre-left. The pre-left years of service are the city's responsibility and we have 31,257 dollars budgeted in 2022 for those responsibilities. And we have $15,000 scheduled for an actuarial study. There is an accounting standard that requires trust funds be be reviewed by an actuary every two years and it's pretty expensive. So we pay nearly as much for the study every two years as we do for the benefits that we pay out of it, but but that's, that's it. That's it for Fund 611. I'd be happy to answer any questions that council may have on any of the material that we covered tonight.
Mayor here.
Mister Young.
You know, again, for me, this is just comprehensive, just a great presentation, but truly a lot to continue to absorb each time you go through it and each time I go through it, sometimes there are additional questions that come up and say, oh, I didn't think about that. Let me look at this. And so, you know, Mr. Hogland and may I be prepared for some additional questions to come up later on? I just sort of wanted to put that out there.
Absolutely. Any other comments or questions from the council or members of the audience this evening?
Mayor here.
Mister Walters.
Mister Hogland, do you want to give a preview of next steps and your timelines?
Yeah, certainly. So we, what we have scheduled for next week in this, so next yeah, next, next council meeting, next Monday is the public hearing on both the budget and the CFP. And then the so the public hearing and then by the end of the month. So the 22nd, right now, November 22nd is when I have the property tax increase. So an ordinance for the property tax increase and also budget ordinance and CFP ordinance. I can bring all of those back. On the 22nd, the property tax ordinance is required to be filed with the county before the end of November. The, the budget ordinance and the CFP ordinance only need to be completed by the end of the year. So we're happy to schedule additional reviews of the budget. If council would like to dig in further, we've already committed to coming back to talk further about the ladder truck and the general, general fund financing more broadly. And I was thinking of that in two weeks as well. That would put us at the 15th or perhaps the 22nd. We could maybe make the 22nd just a big old budget night.
Happy Thanksgiving. Okay, any other questions for Mr. Hogland?
Mayor here.
Yes, Mister Walters.
So I guess I would suggest that we talk, we, we plan on receiving the public comment next week. And then we plan to talk about the budget on November 15th as well as the 22nd. And then we plan to talk about the budget on November 15th as well as the 22nd.
Correct.
Yeah, so we'll go ahead and schedule that then. Actually, schedule a budget hearing on the 15th. And, and go from there. Yeah.
Okay. Any questions tonight? Any thoughts? Hey, well, thank you, Mr. Hogland. Great presentation, thorough review. And if there's nothing else for the good of the order, I'm going to adjourn the council meeting. Have a lovely evening. Thank you. Good night.